Welcome to the April 21st, 2020 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meetings in the Council Chambers of the Centennial Building at 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma at 7:00 PM. This evening, we welcome the invocation given by our council pastor. Shelley Selby. And following the invocation, we will have the flag salute.
I just stand. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight and we just ask for your blessing upon our city and our people. God, I pray for an answer to this COVID-19. I pray for answers to come swiftly. God, I pray for those that are suffering, that are sick, that are financially suffering, those that are going through hard times. God, that you just bless their lives. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for our wonderful city. God, give us wisdom and discernment. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Roll call, please, Mr. Shivers.
McCarron.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
Kachini.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Presentations and proclamations this evening, Mr. Shivers.
Those will be moved to the council comments section of the meeting.
Okay. This is the visitors' section. This section of the proceedings is for visitors who would like to address Yukon City Council on a non-agenda item. Each person will given three minutes to address the council and by open meeting rules, no discussion will take place. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Yes, I would like to. There's no one else?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I don't believe this is on the agenda.
We need your name and address, ma'am.
Yeah. Would you please give us your name and address and then begin?
Right. So Caterina Guerin, I live at 11308 Southwest 5th Street in Yukon. And I want to talk to you about today about one of concerns that I have is the upcoming deployment of the new generation of wireless that we're going to be seeing here in Yukon probably, and we have already been seeing throughout other parts of the state. I, as you probably know, this is a very new technology that is very different from the previous ones, the previous generations, because it involves a lot closer contact to the towers and to the transmitters. Transmitters will be very close to people, where people live. They will be on lampposts. They will be a lot closer to people, which is a concern for anyone who is already concerned with the health effects of radio frequency, radio frequency radiation. And that's a concern that I have and not only me. I'm not a scientist per se in this field. I am an IT engineer, but not a wireless engineer. There are actually over 200 European doctors as well, and I am Portuguese-American, so I'm very aware of what's going on in Europe. And there's, they have signed an appeal to, to set a moratorium to the development of 5G. So if you want to check that out, it's at 5gappeal.eu. We're talking about very knowledgeable people who are definitely very concerned about this technology, including from the biggest universities in Germany, from the charity, for instance. So I would definitely advise to look at that. And I would, I would ask you really sincerely to look at this and see if you can create ordinances that will regulate this more than it is right now through the FCC, which, if I understand correctly, they're really not regulating it really at all besides the thermal effects, which is very incomplete regulation. So yeah, I'm open to any more questions you have to me about this. I would definitely suggest looking at the resource here, the 5gappeal.eu, and getting information off of there.
Because of the fact that it's a non-agenda item, we're not allowed to discuss that by open meeting rules. However, please feel free to contact the city again, and there will be things forthcoming in the future. Okay? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll be looking out for that. Okay.
Is there anyone else here? No? Seeing none, proceeding on. We will now recess as the Yukon City Council and convene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A. On the Yukon Municipal Authority agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of April 7th, 2020; B) material claims in the amount of $66,555.44. Do I have a motion, please?
So motion, ma'am.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, vote please.
Wooten.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item's approved. We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 on the council agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) minutes of the regular meeting of April 7th, 2020; B) payment of material claims in the amount of $1,138,727.97; C) denial of claim number 207686-PD from Jenna Shipley for sewer backup as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; D) accepting the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit, number WL000009200108, for the construction of approximately 15 linear feet of 6-inch and 745 linear feet of 8-inch water lines and pertinences to serve the City of Yukon, West End Point Edition, Phase 2, Section 6 Waterline Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma; and E) setting the date for the next regular council meeting for May 5th, 2020, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building of 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion, Jennifer.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Item 2. Reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Do we have any reports? Mr. Crosby.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3. Consider approving Resolution 2020-05. A resolution of the City of Yukon requesting the Oklahoma Department of Wildlife Conservation to consider the Mulvey Pond Fishing Dock for approval of the Boating and Fishing Access Program and for funding in the amount of $23,999 with matching funds of $24,559. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, Jennifer.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? About fishing on Mulvey Pond? No discussion. Vote please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Item 4. Consider approving Resolution 2020-06. A resolution declaring the necessity in acquiring certain permanent and temporary easements located in Sections 16 Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, authorizing, instructing, and directing the city manager to acquire said temporary and permanent easements for public, street drainage, and utilities, and uses incidental thereof, for the City of Yukon Project, commonly referred to as the State Highway 4 Improvement Project 0475704, by purchase and settlement of damages with landowner and authorizing, instructing, and directing the municipal councillor to condemn said property for said purposes if said permanent easements cannot be purchased and the damages settled by agreement with the landowner. And this is in regard to the Salazar property. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this issue? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yep.
Selby.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 5. Consider approving Resolution 2020-07. A resolution declaring, establishing, and clarifying the city's practice that requires that a minimum size water line for each section line road in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Item 6. Consider awarding the bid and entering into a contract with Simiron Construction Company in the amount of $350,830 for the North Gregory Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project and acceptance of the bonds as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this issue? This is just the bridge out there on Gregory that was damaged. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. And this is a joint project with the county and city. Half the bridge is in the county and half the bridge is in the city, and we're working together and we'll split this price when it's finished.
Okay. Any other comments on this issue? Motion, please. I'm sorry. Vote, please. Not motion. I would have one.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Item 7. Consider awarding the bid and entering into a contract with TCS Construction LLC in the amount of $564,900 for the Yukon Emergency Operations Center and acceptance of the bonds as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. On this, Jim, do you want to comment on the fact that we're redoing our emergency center because a lot of people don't know that we've...
This is a building that will be adjacent to the present EOC, and what will allow, we do not have a redundant system today because of many problems, and this will allow us to have a redundant system. So if a tornado or something would hit the police station itself, we'd still be fully operational and be able to get in the EOC and operate. And with this, we'll come back, we'll be in a tanna, a tanna that we'll have to put up. And of course, we'll get the emergency operations equipment that will go into this for protection. So we certainly recommend this approval.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 8. Consider approving a revocable permit to the Integris Canadian Valley Hospital for the construction and maintenance of a monument, message board, and monument sign on a portion of the public way or easement or city-owned property at 1201 Health Center Parkway. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
And is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, on this particular item, if you recall, when we widened Health Center Parkway, we had to remove their sign that was there, and so they want to re-erect another sign there, and this will allow them to do so.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Kachini.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. New business this evening, Mr. Shivers?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We are at council discussion. Let's start this evening with Councilwoman Yanda.
I'm not going to come up here. Have me stand, okay? Have me stand. Why don't you take this off? That way I can... Mike, on behalf of the City of Yukon and the city's employees and the city council, we would just like to extend our appreciation to you for the many years of service and dedication you've given to our great city. We wish you a wonderful retirement now that you're retired from city government, and we just thank you again. And we would like to present this clock to you, which says, Michael McCarron, thank you for your years of public service to the Yukon City Council. You served from May of 2012 to May of 2020. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. I couldn't be more, I couldn't be more pleased, really, for my time. I'll have some comments a little further on in the discussion area. I think Doug is behind this because he always wanted to make sure that I got here on time. So I really, I appreciated that a lot, and I really appreciate Yukon. There is no better place on this planet to live than Yukon, Oklahoma. And I just, we prove that every single day. I couldn't be more pleased to be here and say that I am from Yukon. Thank you all very much. Did you have anything else you'd like to say? Okay. Councilman Wooten.
Mr. Mayor, it's been a pleasure serving with you for the last year. Learned a lot and taught me a lot, and I appreciate you. Your service to your community is something we should all strive for. So thank you. Second thing, got a little speech here. So we all take pride in our title of Yukon Millers. We've become known as Yukon Millers because of the Yukon Mill and Grain Company that was the original cornerstone of our wonderful community. It was such an important industry and responsible for the modernization of Yukon itself. However, it wasn't the product that made it such a pillar in our community. It was the Millers, the hard-working men and women who worked there every day to support their families. Our town takes dignity in the numerous people who work behind the scenes in order to make a successful production. These employees may not be in the public eye, but they are essential. It is essential for them to have a job in order to support their families. So fast forward, Mr. Crosby, I challenge you to find a way to hire back all our laid-off employees and that no more jobs need to be sacrificed during this time. City administration, department heads, we need to go back and go back to our origin. Remember the great people who came before us and all they did to create our great community. Remember who was and will continue to be the pillars of our community, the people working to sustain our great town and support their families. We, as leaders of the community, have stepped back and have a people-based perspective. As the economy fails and times are uncertain, many fret about losing their jobs. We must take care of the employees that have taken care of us for so long. City administration, department heads, I'm asking you today to do what is right. I'm asking you to do, I'm asking you today that our city employees will have a consistent job and a promise from us that they will be able to feed their families. I'm asking you to reevaluate and find creative ways to maintain a substantial budget and be a leader for our people. We have been enlisted with the honor of protecting and improving Yukon. Therefore, we must recognize and appreciate the value of every people who keep this city running. I know it's a challenge, but it's something I think we can do.
I accept that challenge, and I would like to say, you know, when I first came back to the city, the city was broke. We got ourselves back in a strong financial position. It's my responsibility to see that we're fiscally sound every day. It bothered me probably more than anybody here to let anybody go or layoffs. I have mentioned to the council that all the information before you tonight talks about oil being at a zero base, the state talking about a 1.3-something billion-dollar shortfall next year, which will be, they more than deplete any ready-day fund they have. Talked about every city that, too, the United States has been hit by this, and we're being hit by it. To what degree, we don't know. When we're going to come back to normal, if there is a normal, we don't know. But as I explained to the council previously, it is my hope since we go through the budget that as we reopen these items, that we will be able to hire these people back. And right now, as I mentioned, all their positions are in the July 1 budget, if this is approved by this council, and we will make lots of cuts. We talked about numerous items before, how we can save money. And it goes from furloughs, it goes from no-step increase to number of items that we're going to have to deal with. How dire that cut's going to have to be, I can't tell you, but we are going to be fiscally sound. We have to have a balanced budget, and we will do so. And we will work together, I hope, to move forward and get these people back working. But I think to be physically responsible, when all these places are closed and they don't have a job or things to do, we cured them for three weeks and paid them. We paid them their time they had saved and their vacation time and what have you. Doing our best to hold on to them as long as we can. We've asked for a library grant right now that if we get it, we can reopen the library and hire these people back. It should come in. We're supposed to be notified this week. We're diligently working all the time to see how our funds are, and again, I don't know when we can reopen. I hope everybody's pushing to reopen immediately. You know, when they talk about our peak, when we reach our peak, if you watch the news, which I follow everything I can on it, it was supposed to be April 15th, then April 21st, now April 30th. And one person on television last night, they were talking about, they estimate it to be June 8th. So it's an evolving thing. It's something that's never happened in our lifetime. And being the senior member here, I can tell you, I can never remember oil being at zero. Think of that. And being the dire state, the state's going to be in terrible shape next year. And I know they talked about a $451 million shortfall. They don't know what it is. That's their estimate for this year. That's not next year. But I do hope that we all can work together and get these people back working. I've talked to you, that's my plan, and we're going to have to all work together to it. We're going to have to work with our unions because we have contracts with them, and they're, they're willing to give some things, too, and talking with them. And I'm meeting with them, and met with one today, and I'm going to meet with the other one tomorrow, trying to work up some solutions that we can come in and say, hey, this is what we need. We've got to have this in the best interest of this community to go forward. And I feel that they will respond accordingly, and we will start about the middle of next month going through our budget, and let's see if we can get it all approved and agree on a solution and get these people back working.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Crosby.
Councilman Kachini. Oh my gosh, I got a chance to talk.
Wow.
One of you never...
Well, I appreciate this. The veterans of our community have come to me and said, we've got to do something for this mayor, since he's done a lot for us. And as you know, the veterans have put their lives on the line, and some of them have lost their lives. But we wanted to give something special to our mayor, one who's been supporting the veterans throughout the committee since he was a mayor. So I want to thank you, and from all the veterans, we thought you'd like to have one of our coins.
Thank you very much. That is pretty... That is pretty special. I do like, I actually like the Veterans Museum, too. That's pretty cool. I'm still trying to get with the mask thing. Councilwoman Selby.
Thank you. Mike, I just want to thank you for your leadership, the countless hours that you have borne into this city over the years, and all the different committees, the city council that you've served. Here are some cards that were sent to me for you. I hate that we didn't get to have our reception tonight, but when this is over, we're going to have one for him. But I also want to thank you for your personal leadership and that I've benefited from the last two years, taking us, as we're new at this, under your wing and giving us the, teaching us the ropes. So I thank you for that. I'm also thankful that we live in a town where we don't have politicians on this council. We have your everyday people, the people that are your neighbors, who care about you and who love this city. And as I look back, this is the end of my second year, I want you to know that I take my job, as all the rest of us do, very serious. We pray over it, we question, we research every decision that we make. And although sometimes I misspeak, sometimes I'm misunderstood, and sometimes I make mistakes, I look forward to two more years of learning and serving this city. But during this time, it is a very difficult time for us all. It's unprecedented. We are having layoffs and oil prices falling, the isolation of our people, but I want you to know, we're all in this together, and we offer you help. I'm glad that our city has resources for you. And if you do not have enough food to put on your table, I'm thankful for places like Yukon Sharing, Manap pantry, Compassionate Hands, Jacob's Cupboard, and our public schools for offering food. Please seek out any of these agencies if you need help. And as we go forward, I know we will survive this, not just as people, but as neighborhoods and as a community and as a city. And I look forward to working with each one of these people united to find creative ways to help our city not only survive this, but to come out even stronger and better.
Thank you, ma'am. This is normally where I would stop for a moment and give a list of the upcoming events. There aren't any. We've canceled virtually everything, including the retirement this evening. But I think the most important part to me is, I've got just a couple of comments. You know, we've come through really numerous problems over my past eight years that brings me to our current dilemma, which is COVID virus, or the coronavirus, COVID-19. It's attacked not only us, but the entire planet. And we have, in my view, certainly continued to do the right things based on all the best knowledge and practices available to keep the citizens of Yukon safe. In spite of the lot of phone calls that I got suggesting other methods, I feel like we followed a good path. I fear many more challenges, however, for the council. Eric, I'm glad you decided to come tonight and listen, because there's many more challenges yet to come. We have, well, we will overcome this pandemic. We just will. It's a part of the spirit of Yukon and it's part of America. I'm going to finish my tenure with a lot of feelings that can all be described as humble, gracious, and thankful for the opportunity to have served this community, which I've been a part of for over 50 years. I spent 10 years in the planning commission, lucky to experience the ins and outs of property planning, as well as how a city develops. My experience have brought low points, such as the financial difficulties we discovered in 2015 before Jim came back, high points, such as, a lot of folks don't like this much, but when Frank Crawford stood up in front of us and told us that in this year, we have a perfectly clean audit, every single fund, every single... Every single fund, every single one of our accounts is in order. So as we face the pandemic, we at least do so with a full tank of gas, that we should be able to go forward. It was pretty important to me that we get restored to our financial integrity once again. Really has been a special thing for me. Once again, the restoration will mean that the coronavirus now will probably be my new low, since I'm leaving at a time when we're all experiencing trouble. And I'll look forward to see how that's all handled in the future. And that's really because so many people here have been so adversely affected through all of the, all of the things that have gone on. I am particularly proud, and I say this to everyone, of our city management. You know, a lot of people don't realize what really does go on every day. They have, it takes, it takes an army just to present the 200 pages of information that we get every two weeks to make sure that we try to do the right things for our city. I see nothing but good opportunities moving forward with the city council, city manager Jim Crosby, who I've given a lot of credit to because he certainly has been an integral part, our city attorney Gary Miller. You know, Gary brings 43 years of experience on the bench to come to Yukon and has been more than helpful on many, many issues to bring things, bring things to a resolution as opposed to just winding up in court. And Tammy Kretschmar. Tammy, I'm proud of you for taking over at a time when, 2015, when things were really not very good at all. And we were having to do what? Layoffs and other things. And Mitchell Horton. I can't miss Mitchell because after 10 years on the planning commission, he certainly is one who puts in an awful lot of his time. They comprise a solid base that we have that I don't see really in any other town. Maybe somebody has it, I've not seen it. And I want you to know, as all of the people of Yukon, that you have good people here doing good things. We have good police, we have good fire, and all of the employees are very supportive. We will get through this. Our future will include developments, including Highway 4, Frisco Ridge, the I-40 interchange, legal issues on marijuana. I smile because our good judges had more fun with the marijuana issue than many of you will ever imagine. I thought it was unique tonight that the lady called in and talked about 5G, which is coming our way. Mr. Horton and I have already had discussions about ordinances that are probably going to be, have to be in place for us to have 5G when it comes to our town. As well as all of the other city ordinances, legislation, the oil companies, particularly a problem right now when oil went to zero. You know, it's going to be a really difficult time for them. And quality of life, you know, just getting out, going to the parks. Of course, the most infamous problem that I expect this council to overcome during its tenure after I leave is the traffic on Garth Brooks Boulevard. Want to make sure that everybody takes care of that. Those are just a few of the issues moving forward. So we are a very live community. And now, in keeping with our policy of only allowing three minutes, I will conclude that after eight years on the council, I will leave not having done anything perfect, but I will leave a legacy of having things done. Many good things have been done here in Yukon, the foremost of which, I am most proud to have been the councilman for Ward 4 and your mayor for the last three years. I can say thank you at this time. And I would like to take one second to say, would you all please join me in a moment of silence for all of the folks who have succumbed to COVID-19? And with that, this meeting is, as I usually say, adjourned.